We will call to order. The City of Milton, Kevin Council Meeting Tuesday, June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three at six P M. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton Pigly Wiggly, Milton City Hall and Hometown Ace Hardware.
And um. Uh Ryan is traveling, is not able to make the meeting tonight. And um Linda said she might be a little late, so just for an update. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, I just have to point out Eric, you're a team of one.
Yeah.
I expect this side to step up then. He can't do motions in seconds all by himself, but he can do the pledge of allegiance. Alright, so this is probably gonna be the first in like ten meetings that I actually don't skip over public comments and go right to the proclamation, so. Are there any public comments regarding any items which can be affected by council action? So anybody signed it? Nope, okay, shake of the head. Alright, mayoral proclamation. The Office of the Mayor proclamation LGBTQ plus Pride Month, June two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas catalyzed in the early hours of June twenty-eighth nineteen sixty-nine, the Stonewall riots in the Greenwich Village neighborhood of Manhattan, New York. Marked a pivotal turning point in the fight for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and queer rights in the United States and laid the groundwork for June to be recognized as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in Wisconsin. And nationwide. And whereas members of the LGBTQ plus community in our state, across our nation and around our world. Have collectively worked to overcome gender, race, sexuality and class adversity for generations. Combating social stigma. Demanding visibility and representation and demonstrating incredible resilience. And whereas over the past several decades, the state has taken critical steps towards achieving LGBTQ plus equity and equality. Such as the passage of the nation's first law banning discrimination on the best basis of such sexual orientation. In nineteen eighty-two. And the election of LGBTQ plus individuals to public offices. At all levels of government, including the first openly LGBTQ plus woman. Elected to the U S House of Representatives. And the first openly LGBTQ plus person elected to the U S Senate. And whereas the Milton Youth Coalition. Has identified members of the LGBTQ plus population. As a priority in their action plan. And whereas we celebrate Pride Month in the City of Milton, we are reminded that every person deserves to stand boldly in their truth. Without fear, persecution, judgment or discrimination. Now therefore, I and Nisa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby claim June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Sign it the twentieth day of June two thousand and twenty-three. And we are very happy and encouraged by all the work that the Milton Youth Coalition continues to do with the youth. In the City of Milton and the School District of Milton. Approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. So um it doesn't look like Chief Pickering is here. So we can move um his presentation down to wherever we're at when he gets here. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand twenty-three fourteen. It's a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of two million two hundred fifty thousand. General Obligation Promissory Notes, Series two thousand twenty-three. And there are documents there and we'll have some comment.
Yep, so this morning uh our bond uh went to to market, went to sale. And uh we were uh very fortunate, as I noted to the council last week, uh that we had an increased rating in our bond rating. Uh so that uh you know essentially saved the taxpayers of Milton quite a considerable amount of money. Uh and we were able to get a very favorable bid of three point two nine percent from B O K Financial Securities. Kelsey sent out some information this afternoon that not only included the resolution that will be hopefully approved tonight, but also. A brief presentation by P M A, who's our financial advisor, that kind of just walks through the process. Uh and how B O K became the uh winning bidder. And ultimately what that means for the City of Milton. Uh we don't have to go through all eight of the slides, but I would draw your attention uh to slide six. At the very bottom, that's sixty-four thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars is what we uh the savings that uh we will see. In this process due to the increased bond rating. And then slide seven shows the schedule moving forward. Uh and that schedule is essentially done where with the approval of the resolution this evening. Uh the the next process or next step in the process is that B O K will transfer the funds to the City of Milton. Uh and that won't happen until July eleventh, but the resolution would need to be approved tonight and and signed by the mayor. Uh and we will be on our way towards funding those projects uh that are very exciting about in the City of Milton. So resolution twenty twenty-three fourteen would be the resolution that would authorize the issuance and sale of two point two five million. Uh and promissory notes to B O K Financials.
And do you have any questions or comments? This will be a roll call vote. So whenever you are ready. We do, yep. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in, oh, okay. All those in favor will be asked to do a roll call vote. And those saying no will too. So we'll start with.
I will go ahead and take the roll call vote. Stockman?
Aye.
Clark? Holbrook? Walker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. The next item on the agenda. Is discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand twenty-three fifteen, authorizing the total number of issued and reserved Class B liquor license.
Okay, so it's liquor license renewal time again, and as part of our process, we do a resolution each year to verify how many. Number of issued or reserved Class B liquor license the city is able to issue. Um so it has in this resolution how we came up with that number. It has not changed from last year. So the number of reserve license, which really is what we're looking at this point as authorized issue is two. Um and then again, that includes that we have nine actual Class B liquor licenses granted by the City of Milton. Again, that was uh established in nineteen ninety-seven.
Questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding alcohol license renewals. For two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four.
So to continue with the process, it this is an annual renewal, so it's from July first to June thirtieth. And there are a couple of key changes that we had from last year, so. Uh we had QuickTrip, Dollar General and Kelly's Pigly Wiggly. They have new agents that that have been applied for, so essentially this means the person that is in charge. Of the liquor license, meaning they're um if there were any issues, they're the ones overall responsible for that have changed. And then also Casa Fiesta, Charlotte's Coffee Stop and Bushwood have decided not to apply for renewals of the liquor license. These do go through background checks from the police department and we did not find any issues. And if there is a motion made for approval, it would just need to include pending any outstanding charges due to the City of Milton.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion? Arc?
And in this, that would not be included, so you have not.
That's what I thought.
Yes, so uh this is approval or denial of the license renewals that have been applied for.
So Charlotte previously had a license but has just has decided to not reapply. So her name is listed in the staff memo, but there's no action taken on her business.
Okay, good question. Is there a motion?
Is now. I I would move approval of the um alcohol. License renewals for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Pending out any outstanding charges.
I'll second that modification.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, this that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding tobacco cigarette licenses for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four.
So the tobacco cigarette licenses, they're uh applied for and on an annual renewal basis, it's the same as the alcohol licenses and so there have been no changes. These do not go through the same process as the background checks, but they are verified through the city as far as any outstanding charges. Um that are paid or charged at this point.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the renewal. Of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four tobacco cigarette licenses pending any outstanding charges due to the City of Milton.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Want to pose? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four outdoor display of license application.
So with this is is still relatively new with the outdoors display of like display of merchandise, excuse me. Um where people are at, people, excuse me, businesses are able to put merchandise out on the sidewalk and if they choose to, they have specific. Restrictions or requirements that they have to go through. Uh if for this year, they have, we have Hattie and Elsie and Sunny and Olive have both. Requested renewals of their outdoor display of merchandise licenses and we have not received any complaints at this time.
And they've met their requirements?
They have met all their requirements, yes, that's correct.
Questions or comments or a motion?
I would move approval of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four outdoor display license applications as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding. Continuation of a private lead service line replacement program and resolution two thousand twenty-three sixteen, resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing.
So if you recall the June sixth meeting, um we discussed applying for the funding that was made available. Available by the D N R to continue our lead service, private lead service line replacement program. Um if if uh or as part of the application process, we're required to uh pass the resolution indicating that we will. Fund the project with our local funds until the Safe Drinking Water Loan closes. I just wanted to add that as part of the application process, I've been having discussions with the D N R and at this time. They've indicated that Milton will likely. Not be eligible for any principal forgiveness or very little based on the criteria they use to um rank that. So given that information, I I would recommend that we don't continue the application process for the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program. There are other uh funding opportunities available to help private residences. Um. We could use rate payer dollars, which would be taking dollars from our water utility. That would require P S C approval and. Passing of a mandatory replacement ordinance, which would require homeowners to replace their private lead service lines. At at a point to be determined by the ordinance. But as far as the um application process. I would I would recommend to that we would just stop and not go any farther because there's not going to be a. Financial benefit. It would require us to take out a loan and we would have to use general fund dollars to repay the loan. Without Public Service Commission approval.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. So and other communities have we seen, or do you think it's possible there could ever be a situation where the city? Will be forced to do this for our lead line service lines, or will it always or does it always fall on the owner?
So the existing program, it was um. Optional, it wasn't required. The funding was available for a hundred percent of the cost. Going forward, at this time, there is not a requirement. In place by the city or the D N R or the E P A that the led the private lead lines are replaced. Uh at a future date, it's very possible that the E P A and or the D N R could mandate that. And say that private homeowners would have to replace their lead service lines. That isn't in place today. And then as far as who would pay for the replacement, you know, unless there was a different funding mechanism made available. Um it would be up to the private owner to to fund that. The only option again that the city would have is through the mandatory replacement ordinance with Public Service Commission approval.
Bill? Do you have a question? Can you turn your mic on? Thanks.
If we simply don't take action on this, it accomplishes what we wish. Is that true?
The at the last meeting, um the the action was to apply for funding. I I don't know, I I guess it probably, I think we should ask for fun or I I would like to be directed to not continue the process. Uh if you want to, we certainly can. I just don't think there's a financial benefit to the city or the residents at this time to do it.
How much time do you put into that yourself?
The applications um for the previous program took, you know, a a few days probably in total. This one's a little more involved. And it's and it's a loan where the other ones were a true reimbursement that we. We would work with the private residents to get their work done and then submit the application for reimbursement. Here we have to estimate and then take out a loan, hope the funds are used and then pay. Interest borrowing costs. It'd be similar to the process we just went through for the big borrowing. For the two point two five million. But it would be a lots of a much smaller amount.
Question for um Attorney Schreeder. Should we put it on the floor and vote it down? Is that the best course of action or?
If if you don't wish to proceed, yes, it would be because as as was indicated that you the council had previously. Directed that that the city proceed with the program. And so that's still their marching orders. And so if you want to change that, there should be another motion to the contrary, yes.
So we need a motion and a second to um. Entertain that possibility, is that correct?
Right, it'd be a motion a second to to uh not approve.
Okay.
The resolution.
I would move that we not approve resolution two thousand twenty-three sixteen. Uh and direct uh Mark not to uh apply for uh the reimbursed expenditures. Oh, we're wrong place.
No, you're right.
Oh, yeah.
I think you're looking at say and not and not proceed with uh.
The application.
The the seeking the um pursuing the the lead pipe replacement program.
What he said.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries to do what you guys just said. Or not do. Discussion and possible action regarding a request from Northern Natural Gas Company to waive the forty-five day notification period.
Uh as part of the um industrial park development that's ongoing, there is a relocation that's taking place of the natural gas pipeline. Some of that pipeline is located on city property within an easement. Northern Natural Gas Company is the owner and they're required by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to notify affected landowners. Forty-five days prior to beginning construction activities. They are requesting a waiver of that time period. So in order to do that, we're requesting council approval. And the notification letter and the location of the easement are attached.
Questions or comments? So the letters haven't been sent out, right? And it's dated June first, so they would be.
This letter was what was sent to the city.
Okay.
Requesting us, the city waive our rights to the forty-five day notification period.
Okay. So we're not talking about letters going out to residents. We're talking about notification to the city.
Yeah, this is a requirement of the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Of the owner of the utility to notify the affected property owner.
Which in this case is us and you.
Yeah, okay. Alright. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the requested waiver by Northern Natural Gas Company.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action on ordinance two thousand two thousand twenty-three five eighteen, amending section thirty-four dash forty-one Historic Preservation Commission. Who wants to talk on this? Ryan's gone, so Inga.
The Historic Preservation Commission, they met and reviewed the ordinance. They want to add a student member to the commission. Just like the Parks and Recreation Commission has. This will be a high school age student that will be added to the commission on an advisory level.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve. Make the motion to approve the first week reading, waive the second and the third and adopt ordinance two zero two three dash five one eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Alright, that motion carries. Anybody have any general items?
I have a couple of questions. I was just wondering. Are and this is more, this is kind of a parks question. Are we gonna be able to get our signing in the prairie designating the years that each section was planted yet this year?
Are you asking for Parks and Rec to put that on their agenda on an agenda for them?
Well, it's actually been talked about so many times. I'm just thinking that we're we're blooming. We're gonna be blooming.
So do you want this as an agenda item for council or for Parks and Rec?
For Parks and Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Yes.
So you can ask Ryan to put it on the agenda for Parks and Rec.
Okay, did you guys, did you talk about it last at your last meeting? Cause I didn't talk to Ryan about it, so.
So so Ryan had mentioned that you asked him if the prairie seed picks dates had been set for this year yet. Um I need to contact Dave Benlin, see what his availability is in October still, so the seed pick dates are not set yet. But the signs that you're referring to, I remember those there being conversations on them. I just don't know. If we physically have them or if those need to be manufactured or or what exactly. So we'll, I'll check with Public Works staff and just see if we have those or if we need to do something with them.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
That's it, okay. Anybody else for a general item? Um any committee reports? Okay, any staff reports? Go ahead, Mark.
Um Clean Sweeps Friday. In Milton here at Public Works Facility. Clear Lake Road Construction's ongoing. Thanks to everybody for their patience. Um and then Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday next week, we will have um sewer lining taking place on Madison Avenue, so there'll be some construction work there. Similar to what was a couple of weeks ago with the blue trucks.
Inga?
I'm gonna. I'm gonna kick it back to Eric. He can give the Parks and Recreation Commission report.
Go ahead.
I got I got staff reports and committee flipped in my head.
Oh, okay.
Tell you about Parks and Rec. It was exciting and I don't know how I could forget, but.
I don't know how you could either, but I have a lot of grace for you.
Parks and Rec, so we talked about the Lamar Park Improvement Project that's about to start. Uh there will be some construction or light moving of things happening over the fourth. Be careful, yellow tape, don't hurt yourself, could lose a limb, but they're going to start uh installing new equipment over there. Uh we are still raising funds. Inga has a wonderful letter she put together that we can. Give to local businesses to help generate some additional funds needed to complete that project. Shoot me an email, shoot uh Inga an email, we can get that to you. And oh, also, we're going to do like a dog days at the Splash Park. Probably near the end of the season, so I, in September, I don't know if I should say September twenty-third, it's leaning towards September twenty-third, tentative. But we're gonna bring some local businesses into it, thinking like maybe a food truck with hot dogs, you know, with the dog dog theme. But more details will come on that. Stay tuned at local city council meetings to learn more.
And will that be a fundraising, like where you have to pay a fee to bring your dog to raise money for the parks?
That's a fantastic idea. I like it.
Okay, okay.
That's all.
Alright, um that was really, that was very exciting. I'm so glad that you remembered that. Thank you. Um back to staff reports if there's no other committee reports. Okay. Oh, okay, the chief, the chief, the chief till November is raising his hand.
I would also like to thank everybody's for their patience with the North Clear Lake Avenue road closure. And we're going to start incentivizing their patients with citations probably in this coming week. Over over the last seven days, I counted while we were sitting here, we've done more than fifty traffic stops of people going through the signs and or moving barricades. Um and when we're not there, it's constant. So one of the things that I've discussed with staff is um and most of you know me by now. My enforcement philosophy is people have to earn their citations with the additional signage we've now put in place and all of the education we've tried to do over the last two weeks. I think we're to that point. So we're going to be instructing staff that they of course have the discretion whether or not to issue a citation based upon circumstances. But our efforts at warning are coming to an end. And ninety-eight dollar citations will probably get started. So as a reminder to everybody who happens to watch this meeting, North Clear Lake is closed. The only personal vehicles that should be on that road are people who actually live within the boundaries of the construction zone. Rivendell, the intersection of Rivendell and Clear Lake is also closed. Rivendell is not a detour for this construction project. And all of the kind of comments that we get such as, but I just have to go right over there. Or I don't know where to go, or I always drive this way, or what am I gonna do? Were, I'm sorry, Google isn't telling you exactly where you need to go, but a road close sign means road closed. And that is as enforceable as a speed limit sign. So we've exhausted everything that we can do to try to encourage people. I think the people we've talked to have been great and are going to change their behavior. The volume of violations continues though, so.
We could put a sign that says, if you go past the sign, you're getting a ticket.
We had a very similar discussion with Mark and Al and I, I use different language than that. But I don't know how much more we can do. That when someone gets to a barricade blocking a lane of traffic and says road closed. The the instinct of a person to get out of their car and move the barricade rather than turning around and driving someplace else. Boggles me and that has, that is a. It's happening, it has happened hundreds of times since this road's been closed.
And so, just so I understand, people that live on Rivendell are to take the detour, not go through that intersection, right? Come around what Cerns Road that way?
Yeah, that's correct, they. Yeah, I I'm not saying exactly Cerns Road, but that's kind of where my brain's going to. The the idea behind road closed to through traffic means if you have another way to get to wherever you're going. That doesn't involve the construction zone, you're required to take that route. People who live within the boundaries of the construction zone, they have no choice, they have to go within the construction zone to get to their house. I mean, that's, that's what the through traffic sign is all about. Even the people on Rivendell, even when it adds minutes to your commute, even when it's inconvenient. They are required by law and the signage of the road to take the long way. And it's frustrating and I get it and I would hate, you know, to live there and be so inconvenienced as well. But moving barricades and driving on closed roads is creating a safety issue for the the people that are working in that work zone. It's creating a safety issue for the driver of that car. And it creates a, it also creates a perception image. Where if somebody sees you go and drive through on that closed road, then they think, oh, well, that's okay. And then pretty soon you have twenty cars that are thinking they're doing the right thing because well, that one did it, it must be fine. We could have to stop it and we have to stop it before the construction moves on to West Madison because that's gonna become even more complicated. And we're gonna do our best to deliver the point.
So is there a separate ticket for moving the barrier?
There can be, we are choosing not to go that route at this point. Um, but again, discretion applies, so should someone earn more than one ticket, they will receive more than one ticket.
Yeah, I say rule of law, let's go. They've been given a lot of opportunities and I have to do the detour to like everybody does.
Everybody does.
We all can complain all we want all summer long or we can just deal with it and, you know, move on to summer fun activities. Just raise your hand if you've moved the barriers here. I have not, but I have counted how many signs there are warning me to turn on N and there, there's plenty, there's plenty of signs. So, uh, does the library have anything as exciting as illegal activity?
No, we don't thankfully, but um, speaking of summer fun, we had a very, very busy week last week with over twenty-five hundred visitors. To the library for kick for our summer, first week of our summer programming, so we are very busy. Um, our story gardens is progressing along very well, thanks a lot to DPW. If you haven't seen it in a while, come take a look, we have our story walk stations up, there's a shade sale over the chess tables. And it's looking really, really great. And we have an online store for some clothes right now to help fundraise for story gardens. And it features the birds that sit atop of our archway, so that store is open until July sixteenth, I believe.
Kelsey, we're spending money like crazy, is that okay with you?
It'll be okay. The shared revenue bill was signed into law today.
It was and we're cha-ching, getting some cash here. So thank you all for all your support and and everything to move that along and obviously it's not a perfect bill, but it's better than nothing. And we've been getting less than nothing some years, so I don't know, Bill, how much cash is the county gonna? They'll be flush, they'll be flush to make those increases in worker pay. Jenny, do you have anything interesting?
I do, but I feel like this has been talked about already, saying is the road construction. But on a positive note, um, staff has been working with the Milton area Chamber of Commerce, Inga has put together a really awesome map. That will, that has been given to the chamber to distribute and they've decided to distribute outside the city too. So and for campgrounds, et cetera, so all of the the traffic that's coming into Milton hopefully will understand the detour. When they're not getting it through the regular channels. Um, also, um, I've had contact with the town of Milton, they're gonna be putting up some signage. Um, from the chamber side of it, so hopefully we're kind of working together to help that and just encourage people. And of course, the chamber's looking for the businesses, but at the same time, I think they'll help visitors and also possibly residents. Where the some of the signage will be actual arrows of where the detour is, so. On a positive note, that's what's going on.
That's great. Al, I'm sure you have nothing to talk about.
Uh, nothing of major consequence, Phil, I, I, we have dubbed this the summer of road closure at our house, it's been quite entertaining. Also been a good opportunity for some teachable moments for some children. When they say, why don't they just follow the rules? I say, buddy, I don't know. I don't know, so it has been entertaining. But yeah, fifty? Right, it's fifty an hour, I mean, it's nuts, I passed, passed one on the way here, so, yep.
So are we just gonna staff somebody full-time there and?
Uh, probably not unless we can figure out some sort of funding mechanism for that.
Oh, there's some coming next year, I heard.
Yeah, the other option that I'm considering that we haven't decided to get is support from the state patrol. That will make an impression.
I think that would make a great impression. All right, any, anybody I have missed? You don't get a second chance, don't even, don't push the button. From who? No, nobody here knows anything. Not on the agenda. But it is happening. There's a parade at one and a party from Friday to Tuesday. Um, no, we are not, the city does not sell fireworks. But there's a Facebook page or and a website, I don't know exactly what it's called, but it's a private nonprofit running that, so. We'll just move on to team building.
Can I just ask one more question? I have a request, it actually came from one of my neighbors. She has recently discovered that we have water aerobics at the high school. And she had to do a very deep search in finding out the information about that. So I'm wondering if we can't have an MREC schedule on the city website. So that everyone outside of the school district can get the information.
That's all. Okay, thank you. See, ten minutes after general items? Okay, team building, I don't know, you guys, I don't know. Um, all right, so this is pretty simple. Have you seen a movie lately that you'd like to recommend, that you liked on TV, Netflix? I don't care, a book, a book, or you just did something really, really fun that um, you'd like to share with us. So all positive going forward.
We went to the Mario movie and it was great.
Thank you. How easy that was?
I'm gonna play off of the chief's learning, like, let's not break the law, we've been watching Ozarks, the series. Fundamentally, it seems like a good idea, but it doesn't work out so well, do not launder money, kids, okay, it's illegal.
For a certain age group, for a certain age group. Kelsey?
I was thinking, but then I unthought, but I'll just think again. I was just gonna go on with Inga's, the Mario movie's been playing non-stop in my house these days, I think it's, it's Tuesday. I think it's probably been watched three times this week already, so.
I'll piggyback on that, outside of watching cars go through the road close sign, we watch the Mario movie, I'm sure it's on right now at my house.
And how would people without children watch the Mario movie, is it on a streaming channel?
Streaming and it's out now on. Not the, we got it at Target.
Oh, you can buy it.
Or rent it at your local library.
Nice, she's so smart like that all the time.
I'll, I'll pick a book simply because uh. I have not seen the Mario movie, uh, but uh, you know, talk about summer fun. We had, uh, I think our record attendance for our American Lives book group. And the topic was presidential assassinations, it was called The President Is Dead. So if you wanna get a lot of people to uh, get together. Uh, I happened to read several of the books, but one that was really interesting was called Blood on the Moon. Um, which is about the Lincoln assassination. Um, a whole lot more going on there with John Wilkes Booth than you might have thought of. You know, Confederate Secret Service meeting in Canada. Uh, you know, almost reads like the Kennedy assassination in terms of the uh, spy and intrigue stuff.
Go ahead, Charlie, turn your mic on.
Fun Beach Read is the people we, hold, wait, the people we meet?
On vacation?
The People We Meet on Vacation by Emily Henry, who's one of my favorite authors. However, The People We Meet on Vacation is a must-read or listen to. And I did not see the Mario movie and I do not plan to see the Mario movie.
Okay, so I'm in the middle of a book, but I can recommend it because I've liked it so far and it's along the Lincoln. It's um, by John Meacham, his book on Abraham Lincoln and it's really good. I have not seen the Mario movie, but I am totally going to see the Mario movie now because I do not wanna be left out of seeing a movie that's amazing. And I can rent it at the library.
I I don't think anybody mentioned music, but I'm a fan of live music and if you have never seen Nickel Creek live and in person. That was one of the most amazing shows I've seen, at least post-COVID, so um, go see them, saw them in Milwaukee, they were fantastic. Nickel Creek.
Not Nickelback.
Not Nickelback, no, not Nickelback, Nickel Creek, they're a, a trio with a bass player. That is kind of um, bluegrass, sort of underpinning, but a lot of original music based off that. That's, they're, they're just fantastic.
And do they just play, do they play all over the United States or do they have a lot of shows in southern?
No, they're, 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 well, probably internationally known at this point, but they've been off, off. The kind of public side for a few years, um, solo projects and such, but they just came back and. Put out a new album and now they're touring and go see them.
Linda, you got anything, Ashley?
Um, I read a really good book called Lost Cat, A True Story of Love, Desperation and GPS. Where we wanna put the GPS on our cat to determine why it disappeared for five weeks and why it wanted to leave her.
I know, it just sounds like too emotional for me.
I don't really have any movies, I don't watch TV. Um, and so I guess for reading, for me, I have to say it's gonna be whatever I can find online. That I have had to do with my flowers or my trees or my yard, that's pretty much it for me. I enjoy my gardens, that's my, that's my summer fun.
And your grandkids?
Yes, I will see my grandkids tomorrow, so who knows about that Mario movie?
That's right.
I mean, really, who knows?
The library knows, we need a showing, we need a summer showing of the Mario movie, I guess. Charge people, raise money. I'm monetizing everything tonight. Okay, who's left? Teresa?
The two a variety of things, but um. I think I mentioned before about going to our grandson's competition for track and field. And more importantly than the, the uh, competition, we ended up having all of our family from across the state. Come to that competition and it really was the three days that we all spent together. We ended up going to several dinners together and staying at different hotels and doing. Several things together, it was just, it was fun, we hadn't been together like that for a long time.
That's great, I'm kind of jealous about that. Who else has left that hasn't talked about the Mario movie, Jenny?
Well, I won't talk about the Mario movie, uh, because I haven't seen, but I think I might, I I'm in a.
Do you have a comment for her, Charlotte?
Uh, I I'm gonna give you a little negative, but it's actually really interesting is, so this year is uh, the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Titanic movie. Which if anyone knows, I have been obsessed with Titanic in general, probably even before that movie came out. Um, just from things, lessons that are learned from that event, et cetera. Uh, so with that, also Fireside has it this year. Um, but then, yeah, and on that note though, I have been brushing up on certain things. Reading another book called Titanic Unsinkable and with that, it is from the library. Um, but again, it's, it's a very slow read, but it's a different take on it. So I thought that was a, it it's just a very interesting one that's kept me busy.
Great, and will you be doing a book report and sharing that engineering stuff with Eric?
Not planning on it, but.
Well, it would be a, a book, I don't get to a lot of movies or watch a lot of them on Netflix.
Or fun things, I think sometimes you do fun things.
Maybe. But the ones that I can talk about, let's see, that would be um.
So can you just bleep it out?
Well, I'd say primarily I'd be reading, like many say, but I think though, the one book that I've read within the last few months. That I was surprised at how good it was, uh, was The Complete Memoirs of Ulysses S. Grant. So, um. It was, that, that was a excellent read and it was, that guy was a lot more intelligent. And and cognizant of his environment than people gave him credit for. He was a very intelligent man and he knew what was going on, so it was, it was, I learned a lot. Yep, yep, he did. He was in a lot of pain when he, when he was finished the second half of that, that book and then he died shortly after and that. That provided for his family because at that point in time, there was no great pension for ex-presidents, so. Yeah, it was an excellent, excellent book.
Okay, was it like this thick?
Pretty much.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I, yeah.
It was published by Mark Twain as well, I mean, it's a real.
Wow. Alright, Mark E., who has no fun ever except for telling dad jokes. I almost did do that, I did.
I don't know, the kids and I watched a show on Disney called Secrets of Sulphur Springs, that was pretty good. It was a lot better than I thought it was gonna be.
Okay. Is that new, or has it been out for a while? The season? It's a series, and is it on only Disney Channel? Is that the only channel you guys have at your house? Alright, good job, you guys, fun, fun, fun. Eric?
I would like to make a motion to convening the closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five one C, Wisconsin's staffs considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility regarding city administrator position.
Zero, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll move on into closed session. Yeah, just, uh, Kelsey and Al, and, and Mark with an S.